Good evening, I'm going to call the Monday, March 26, 2018 Planning Commission meeting to order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do I hear any changes or amendments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second, all those in favor to approve the agenda?
Aye.
All right, moving on, approval of minutes from the February 12, 2018 meetings, some time ago. Do I have any changes? I'd like to offer one change, I agree with when the meeting was adjourned, but I didn't actually do it. So, I think it was Vice Chair Farr, I think. Did you run the last meeting?
I did.
Okay. I think that should reflect, Vice Chair, please. Any other?
Minor spelling error on page three when I asked about the substrate of the soil. Substrate is one word, S-U-B-S-T-R-A-T-E.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, moving on, we have one public hearing this evening, breweries, distilleries, code amendment, a request to amend city code to address breweries, distilleries, taprooms, cocktail rooms. Julie, will you be speaking towards it?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the commission staff is bringing forward a code amendment to specifically define and address breweries and taprooms, distilleries and cocktail rooms within the city zoning ordinance. So, some time ago, I believe about two years ago, Chapter Four, the liquor licensing chapter, was amended in order to address these types of uses, so definitions were created at that time. Staff is proposing to carry those definitions forward from Chapter Four into Chapter 11 and list them as permitted uses within the commercial zoning districts as well as the industrial districts. In addition to those changes, staff is proposing that parking requirement standards be provided specific to taprooms and breweries, cocktail rooms and distilleries, and that is as proposed in your staff report. Staff is recommending approval of the amendment, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Questions?
Commissioner Wiki. I do have a question, I don't know if, maybe I'm reading this wrong, but the brewery taproom and the cocktail room each are one for 60 square foot of gross floor area and then one for 1,000 for the other, the small brewery and micro distillery. Is that correct, in all subset districts?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the parking standards that are being proposed, yes, are two separate. One, parking requirement for the tasting room slash taproom, and a separate requirement for the manufact-- excuse me, manufacturing aspect of the operation, which would be the brewery or the distillery. So, just like we do on other uses, the way that the property is used will be broken down and parking will be calculated accordingly.
Okay, so, that though, I guess was my question, I didn't know if it was the subset of the entirety, where they were saying one for 60 for the entirety even including the manufacturing portion, or if we were delineating out the manufacturing portion, which would not necessitate as many required parking requirements as would otherwise.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we are separating out and distinguishing between the two uses within the overall use of a taproom and a brewery. So if you've got 1,000 square feet that is being leased for a brewery and taproom, and 200 square feet of that is the taproom, we will calculate the parking based on that. The remaining 800 would be calculated based on the brewery.
Now, following, continuing on, if a restaurant that also brews their own, how does that fall within the purview of these new requirements?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, there is a separate definition in state law for brew pubs, which are uses, restaurant uses, as Commissioner Whatkey is speaking to, and that would fall under the parking requirements for a restaurant. So that is provided for elsewhere in the code based on the number of seats provided within that restaurant. So there's nothing to prevent a brew pub from occurring within the city of Eden Prairie now. In fact, I think there have been several of them in the past that have been here at any given time, and there certainly are provisions already in code to address those uses.
So the ones that are in provision right now, we would not consider them nonconforming with the new standards, we would just continue operating them underneath the standards of which they've been operating presently?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we don't currently have any breweries and taprooms in town. We do have a distillery and cocktail room, and staff would apply these standards to that. There is no concern about nonconforming use on that property.
Okay. I'm just thinking out loud, does it seem as though we're a little stricter on parking requirements, or a little more liberal on parking requirements with the 1 to 60 ratio? Just kind of stricter, does everybody kind of agree with that? I was just in my head formulating what 60 square feet looks like, and sitting down in a restaurant, you're thinking, well, a table generally has four chairs around it, and the table and the chairs itself would probably be within a 9 to 10 by 9 to 10 square foot area, including the chair depth, so that access and, you know, people ambulating around it can get to and fro. So we're one for 60 versus one for 100 for restaurants, and I'm just not sure if anybody else has any concerns or comments on discussion on that.
Julie, did you want to add to that?
Yes, please. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the parking requirements that are being proposed for breweries, taprooms, cocktail rooms, distilleries, that's a mouthful, that are being proposed are based on the research that was done for those specific uses. Many of the other communities that staff has researched, in fact, all of them provided parking requirements for the taproom and taste, or cocktail room, based on square footage. City of Eden Prairie current parking requirements for restaurants are based on, one, the type of restaurant, we have three different types depending on the type of service they provide, and two, parking is based on seating requirements. In the future, staff would anticipate bringing forward a code amendment to address parking rather than on a per-seat basis, but on a square footage basis, in order to be a little bit more universal and all-encompassing in calculating that and looking at what the potential site would be. So, in order to be consistent with what we've seen that's been kind of tried and tested in other communities, and with an eye toward where we are likely to go with the parking requirements, that's why the provisions are in front of you as they are proposed. As we researched other communities, other communities had parking standards down as low as one per 40, that's what Edina proposed for their most recent taproom, I believe it is, that's been added. Other communities were at about 50 square feet. We did a calculation comparing our current parking requirements for restaurants based on the per-seat requirement that we currently have, and tried to correlate that back to square footage, and it came out to anywhere on average between 60 and 70 square feet. So we felt that this was a good compromise and reflective of both scenarios.
Was there any discussion on, because it's the one for 60 and one for 1,000 throughout the entirety of all the subsets of districts, was there any discussion internally on the TOD, specifically TOD areas, the mixed use and the employment subsets? Because, the only reason I ask is, in the TOD area, it's going to be tight for spaces for parking, and I know that some of the discussions when we were going through the TOD drafting process were, what are we going to do with the cars when we're trying to mitigate cars being in this area versus having pedestrian and bicycle and commuting, using the rail commuting services? I'm just wondering if there was any discussion on that.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, there was specific discussion on that. In fact, you'll note in your staff report that while the code amendment proposes to establish parking requirements for breweries, taprooms and the like, there is a recognition of the fact that in many of these retail areas, in particular, is that there are many things that need to be looked at, depending upon the size of the retail center, depending on the mix of tenant uses, there may be opportunity for shared parking or complementary uses, maybe the peak time of several of the other uses is more during the day, and the peak time for the brewery is more in the evening, so there's an opportunity for shared parking there. So in your staff report, there was mention of the fact that while the amendment proposes to establish those minimums, it is possible that there could be waiver requests in the future, and staff may very well end up being supportive of those, but we'll be looking at those on a case-by-case basis, depending on the location of the proposed taproom or cocktail room, excuse me.
May I add something to the discussion here? There's a few restaurants that we frequent in Eden Prairie that have a fairly strong after-work cocktail clientele. I'm thinking specifically Kona Grill and Tavern 4-5, and both of those are fairly tight on parking. You get there about 5:00, 5:30, 6 o'clock, they're both really tight, to the point of hurting, I think, business for 4-5. And I'm wondering if, staff's proposed 60, one per 60, Edina's going one per 40, and others are one per 50, would we, have we thought through maybe going a little bit tighter with the comment you made about there are other circumstances and other situations and waivers that may be considered? Opting for a little bit tighter, because again, just in my, and I'll admit it's a very limited amount of data, it can be tough to find parking at some of the popular taverns, and I would think a taproom would have a similar type clientele, timing and concentration. So just a thought for the other commissioners as well, would we be better off to tighten that up a little bit and leave it to a waiver to loosen it under other circumstances?
Mr. Chair? Yeah, maybe I'll jump on that discussion as well. My personal opinion is that I think each application for this might be unique in that regard, and I'm not sure that establishing a top end or bottom end threshold and then not saying anything more about it in our ordinance and waiting for the applicant to inquire about a waiver, maybe too late, if they read our ordinance at face value. I'd almost rather suggest that parking be looked at strategically, based on the potential mixed use, the district that it's in, because I think these are going to vary wildly. Your examples about Tavern 4 and 5, there's no other office use, the retailers are right there at the same hours of operation, versus your example, of course, at Kona Grill where there's an office building, and you get that shared hour of operation that is a different hours of operation, I should say, and so that could have worked better, I would think. It is tight, but to your point, those are two completely different examples.
And it does work better than 4 and 5.
Yeah, but I'm glad you brought it up. So to that extent, I think that probably we're going to end up with a variety of applications in different areas, and again, instead of just saying one per 60 square feet, or whatever, I thought it was a high ratio myself, Commissioner Whatkey, to agree with you on that point, but there are problematic areas in town as well. So I almost think that, again, instead of just declaring maybe a base level of parking, suggests that, I don't want to say a parking study, but perhaps some direction about shared parking with surrounding uses and the district requirements and obviously transportation opportunities, get thought into it and have the applicant make a proposal back. Is that too open-ended? I don't know.
And I would argue it's too open-ended. I think we have, in our city, too much open space, parking lots, drive around Eden Prairie, and it isn't like our surrounding communities. We have a mix of uses in parking lots and vast stretches of asphalt, and we need to cut down on that. We have to be looking at other ways to get people to businesses, and I don't think adding cars is the way to do it, or adding parking, adding asphalt is the way to do it.
So are you suggesting that a higher parking ratio might be warranted? I didn't want to put words in your mouth, but as opposed to--
I think as the ratio as it's recommended is okay, and if there's a reason to add spaces, we can do that, but the, an applicant who wants more spaces, that won't be an issue. That won't be a variance, it would be less spaces that they would be needing to come before us to ask for. So if it's one for every 40 feet, that would be an applicant's ability to do that. Somebody coming in with a taproom wants to have people come into the taproom, so if they feel like they need more parking spaces, they'll provide more parking spaces.
Just to go back to some history, I remember when Tavern 4 and 5 came, when they changed ownership there from Timber Lodge and came to the Planning Commission, and they wanted to use that private space, and they wanted to add those tables out in front, and they came with a very elaborate plan to say, oh, parking's not going to be a problem. And we bought into it, and we were wrong. I mean, I literally went there a week ago, and we drove in through the parking lot, and there was not one space in that entire parking lot open, not one space. And so, I think the, tell me if my numbers are right, but if we go to 1 to 50 square feet, or 1 to 40, we're adding parking spaces, correct? So, and I also, you make a great point about, there's a lot of asphalt in Eden Prairie, but there's not a lot around 4 and 5, there's not a lot around Kona Grill.
Well, I disagree with that, but whose issue is it that there's a lot of asphalt around 4 and 5? And I've been in your shoes plenty of times trying to find parking at the 4 and 5, and sometimes you're way out on the street, and it, great, they're successful, and it's always crowded in there. No matter what time you go into the 4 and 5, it's crowded.
Okay, I think--
And I think that's great, and if the 4 and 5 feels like they have an issue with parking, they'll, they have to come up with a solution that benefits their business.
I think we're representing different positions, because when I drive in there, I say that was a failure on our part as the Planning Commission to allow that to happen, because it's just, it's always, always very difficult.
Well, and I agree that it's very difficult, but it's a successful business where it hadn't been in the past. So I'd rather there be an issue with people finding parking because the business is successful, than having said, no, we're not going to let you build your business there because we don't have enough parking spots. There weren't any more parking spots at that location.
True, but if, you always run the risk there of the parking spilling over to places where it becomes illegal parking or dangerous parking.
Well, Walgreens has, they've marked their parking lots so that they don't want Tavern 4 and 5 people parking there, and people park on the street, and there are other ways to deal with overflow parking.
We can agree to disagree on that one.
Sure.
So, I don't necessarily have an opinion right now. My other concern regarding parking is that oftentimes breweries and taprooms rely on outside food delivery service servers to provide food, i.e. food trucks. And food trucks take up a couple of parking spots as well. So I presume, A, food trucks are allowed to show up and serve food, and we'll be able to serve food at breweries and taprooms and distilleries, but thinking about what would the impact of having a food truck sit in a parking lot in order to provide food to the taproom that is not able to sell food?
Julie, would you like to speak to that?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I believe it was probably about a year, maybe a year and a half ago, that the city council adopted amendments to the city code with regard to food trucks. So there is food truck licensing, that does not fall within the zoning chapter, it falls within a different chapter, I don't recall which number, but that licensing and those provisions do not allow for food trucks in the commercial districts, they do allow for them in the industrial districts. So if a brewery or a distillery were to be located in the industrial district, they certainly could have food trucks on their premises in order to support the activities at the brewery or distillery, but in the commercial districts, the intention is to provide synergy between the brewery and existing brick and mortar restaurants that exist in those commercial zoning districts.
I mean, to that point, you just need to go to our neighbor in Glen Lake and look at the unmapped brewery, and they've managed to stick a food truck in a very small parking area, and frankly, it's very hard to park it unmapped. But they are, go there on a Friday afternoon and you're going to have trouble finding a seat, much less a parking spot.
Other comments about this discussion?
Mr. Chair? Yes. Can I ask you a question? Is there any concern at all about the placement of these businesses near schools, parks, or religious institutions? Is there proximity regulated in the zoning code in any manner, or should we be concerned about that?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the amendment does not propose any distance requirements from any of those types of uses. In fact, I don't believe that the current zoning ordinance addresses any distance requirements for any other uses. That is something we're looking at for other types of uses currently, but not breweries. In all of our breweries or distilleries, excuse me, in all of our research, we did not find any other community that requires a distance between schools, churches, parks, those types of uses that Commissioner Farr mentioned, and breweries. As you know, many communities, you will see maybe one, maybe two breweries or distilleries, it's not a use that typically is as popular as, say, restaurants. You're going to have quite a handful of restaurants within a community, but usually just a sparse number of breweries or distilleries.
Thank you. And if I can ask another question. Is there any reason why we're excluding wineries or wine tasting rooms? There's probably not enough land left in Eden Prairie to put up a vineyard, but they may have remote tasting rooms, and I just wondered why that particular strain of alcoholic beverage was eliminated.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, staff has, while we have received multiple inquiries through the Planning Division and the Economic Development Division on breweries, we have not received any requests or inquiries, excuse me, regarding wineries. Those just have not come in, probably for the reason that Commissioner Farr mentions.
I have a question, Julie. What accommodations will be made for bicycle parking in front of the taprooms?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that's a question that would be reviewed on a site-specific basis. The city does not require bike parking, except for in the town center and TOD districts. That is something that is required as part and parcel of that zoning district, but in the, I'm going to call them traditional commercial districts, there's not a requirement for bike parking. While there's not a requirement, that is something certainly that the city encourages on every project, as you know, that comes forward before you, we have a discussion or note where the bike parking is located. So that's something that as case-by-case basis review happens, we'll be looking where they can accommodate that bike parking. If in fact they were to propose a use within one of the retail strip centers, be it a small strip center or a large strip center, many of those already provide bike parking on-site through overall property management, and the brewery and distillery would be looking at occupying just a tenant space within that area.
Aside from the parking issue, are there other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
I was just going to ask if I could take a tangent for a second. There was a question that came up, I can't remember who stated it, but the synergy between local area residents and the collaboration between the local area restaurants and the breweries and tasting rooms and whatnot that we're addressing here today, I'm just kind of curious, at what level of food availability do these breweries and distilleries and micro distilleries and cocktail rooms fall into the lines of restaurant use? Is that like something more than chips and salsa and nuts, or cheese and crackers, or something like that? At what point does it stop being a distillery and becomes a restaurant?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the breweries and distilleries are licensed by the state of Minnesota, and the requirement for, requirement or regulations is a better word, regulations addressing food sales on-site are addressed through the state licensing, so that is not something that the city plays a part in regulating.
We're just going to adopt the state licensing program into this new--
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that's correct. That, in essence, that has already occurred in the liquor license chapter of the city's code. What this amendment proposes to do is bring those definitions forward and identify areas of the community where we feel that these uses are appropriate, so that that is quickly and easily communicated out to anybody inquiring about placing such a use in Eden Prairie, they know what properties to look at, what would be available to them.
Under state statute, the brewery, taproom and the restaurant are two separate licenses, so they have to conform to the separate requirements of each license. You have a brewery, taproom license, and you have a restaurant license, they can be in the same place, but owned by the same people, but they have to--
So you can hold two different licenses?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're not precluding a brewery from serving food?
A brewery can have, or a brewer-taproom, under Minnesota statute 348-26, can have a restaurant, but it is a separate license.
Other questions aside from the parking, because I think we need to kind of sort that out still?
One, I got to circle back to the parking, just on an observation, I can't recall the name, nor will I say the name, give them free advertising, but it's in a suburb west of us, along Lake Minnetaka area, and I do remember attending it prior to, and then attending it after they had an outdoor patio. And to accommodate this outdoor patio, they took up a number of, and I want to say three or five stalls that were prime location stalls, up along and probably had to relocate an accessible, an ADA accessible stall to accommodate this patio, and I just am, with the outdoor trend that is happening with those that enjoy the microbrews and being outside, and we even have ordinances that nobody's taken really advantage of, but outdoor seating areas for restaurants, or nobody to my knowledge. I would hate to see the parking become dwindled down because of the little appurtenances that are added post facto. So to your point, John. But I also don't want to make it too strict. No, it's a fine, fine medium there.
Okay, so with the parking, I kind of heard a couple things. Well, first is potentially no parking requirement, and then secondly, if there's a parking requirement, what should the ratio be? So I guess starting with the no parking requirement, does, some discussion around that, does anyone support having no parking? discussion around that? Does any, does anyone support having no parking requirement? I heard that mentioned Commissioner Farr, I believe. Is that something you wanna propose or discuss more?
I certainly don't wanna propose no parking.
I, I'm sorry.
The open-ended ratio, I think we can maybe bracket it potentially, but I've had a moment to ponder and listen to the other commissioners opine on this issue. And my mind is now going towards the unit of our parking ratio rather than a square foot basis. Staff mentioned something about, it used to be calculated and still is in the ordinance on a per-seat basis. And really, the function of the tasting area or the taproom has a lot to do with the capacity, of course, whether there's seated areas, exterior or interior, per Commissioner Wiki's comment about exterior patios. And then there's standing room only. And the standing spaces where people can create and stand up, of course, can get jam-packed. And that, sometimes that's a great environment, as long as we're prepared for that and have the right number of parking stalls to support that. So I'm, I'm questioning whether or not the unit of square foot is appropriate for this, for all of these to be put into one pot, or one glass in this case, and be, be considered the same.
We're talking about a minimum amount of parking, not a maximum.
Correct.
So the, the issue, if people can't find parking, is with the business owner. It's not, it's not with the citizen. So if you can't find a parking space and you leave, that, that's the issue of the business owner. And there are restaurants all over this country in heavily populated urban areas that don't have sufficient parking, and people have to find parking.
Right.
And I don't, I don't know why we would go backwards and be looking at more minimum parking for a restaurant or a brewery.
I, I'm agreeing with you completely. I don't think the number of parking spaces should be increased. I didn't, I wanna make sure that, that's clear. I'm with you on that. I was just changing the unit of measure.
To up, or to go up or down?
Well, potentially both. It was, I was just saying, measure it, give them a parking ratio, albeit higher, for the area where there are seats, seating tables, and another ratio for where there are standing room only. That's all.
Julie, would you like to?
Let me comment.
Let me just go, let me just go to Julie. She wanted to add something, if I could.
I don't mean to interrupt. To Commissioner Farr's comment, staff did discuss the fact that, as I mentioned earlier, current parking regulations for a restaurant are based on seats. However, even at a staff level, we had a conversation about those of us who had experience visiting breweries and what we find as, as consumers in other communities. And there was a great deal of conversation about the fact that, yes, there are seats provided in the taprooms, but there's also a lot of standing room only, high-top tables, other types of provisions that are in place. So the square, because of that mixture of availability for consumers, the square foot unit of measure is where staff landed in order to more equitably apply that and account for a little bit of a, a different twist on, on that business versus restaurants. So that is something that we had discussed and considered in our proposal that, that we've brought forward. But we're certainly open to hearing what the commission recommends as well.
Commissioner Kirk.
I, I'd like to acknowledge, I think Commissioner Weber brought up an excellent point, and that is the balance of too much parking and too much asphalt. And I think we have to always be concerned about that. So I think that's a very valid point. But I also think it's, in my opinion, a little simplistic to say it's the business owner's problem if, if they don't have enough parking, because I think that can turn into the city's problem if it, it, parking spills over into places or becomes some sort of a nuisance. People can't get in and out of lots and we're backing up. So I think the city has to take some view of getting a reasonable level of parking in, in a location, so it doesn't spill into residential areas or other businesses parking and, and cause a problem. That said, I think we also need to be very concerned about, you know, acres of asphalt. So there's a balance in there somewhere. I'm not, not exactly sure where it is.
Commissioner Farr.
I can think of one example in town, specifically our Champs, where the problem has occurred, and then they've had to reach out to their neighbors and put signs up for neighboring tenants, so that those other parking stalls were protected. Unlike the shopping center across from Prairie Village Mall where, where Tavern Four and Five is, where it's still a free-for-all and there are no dedicated parking stalls, absent maybe two or three for the dry cleaners and Subway. But, but otherwise, that parking lot is a free-for-all. And, and I don't know if, if staff has a perspective on that, if that was a forced judgment with, with Champs. And I don't know if we can speak freely in, in public forum about that issue, but just as we're comparing examples around town, the supply and demand of parking, I agree with Commissioner Weber's point about supply and demand. The, the owner, operator is going to be very concerned about providing enough parking for his customer demand, regardless of what we have in the ordinance. So was that a, a unique or acceptable way to provide adequate parking, or, or controlled parking, rather, at that Champs facility?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, when the Champs site, and I apologize, I don't recall when that property came through public review, if it was Champs or if it was a different restaurant. It may have been a different chain at that time that was within that. Staff did review the parking requirements, and based on the number of seats provided, that site is in compliance. Now, over time, whether more seats have been added, that I cannot speak to. That scenario of a restaurant or a user indicating X number of seats on their site plan, we calculate parking, planning commission reviews it, everything comes out above board or compliant with code. And then as time goes by, things change. There isn't necessarily an opportunity for staff to have a look back at, at those sites to add more parking or understand how parking on that site occurs. If parking is required on a per-square-foot basis, we have an opportunity to look back at that, because when they add any square footage, they're coming back through the building permit process. So you will find many communities that regulate their restaurant uses based on square footage rather than based on seats, because it is a more opportunistic way to be able to review, review those sites on a more recurring basis as improvements, or if outdoor seating is added. Certainly if a business is operating for a couple of years and decides, hey, we'd like to add some outdoor seating, they usually come to us, or they go to the building department or the fire department to have those conversations. We take a look at, does the site provide enough parking to support those additional seats being provided? If the requirement were square footage, we'd take a look at the square footage area being provided.
Well, Champs is a perfect example. We had a, a meeting here where we talked about adding parking spaces to that facility, and, and we approved a plan to, it was the old gardening center, I can't remember the name of it, Frank's, that their outdoor area, we, we approved a plan of it, turn that into parking. I don't know how that's worked out, but...
I think also, if you're driving around Four and Five, for example, and the parking lot's completely packed, you're pretty sure that inside it's an hour, hour and a half wait. So what if it's three hours? Do we build parking that covers three hours worth of people waiting? I don't know, it kinda self-pleases, right?
And you're right. It's, it's really the business owner's issue, up to the point where that parking becomes a nuisance that impacts beyond their, their business and the, and the, the local area there, their parking area. So do we just kinda let them deal with it so long as it doesn't spill out into the city street, or, you know, spill out parking into a neighbor, a neighborhood where it's not desirable?
Well, I don't know if we let them deal with it, but we, because we do have parking requirements, right?
Yeah.
They're just, they're just being more successful than our parking requirements.
Well, to your point of Tavern Four and Five, I, I thought Wagner Way has no parking signs east of the, I guess it would be the...
Does, the intersection.
The intersection, you know, the, the curb cut going into that, that mall area. So, and, and you see people there all the time. Now, that'd be a really strong revenue opportunity for parking violations within the city. But, you know, to what extent do we wanna dedicate a patrol officer to just deal with such, such a mundane idea where we can maybe nip it in the bud?
But that is a situation we do not wanna see.
And we don't wanna see that, yeah.
Where we have to have active enforcement to keep it from becoming too big a nuisance. And, you know, may, maybe I'm, maybe I just don't like having to hassle the parking. And, you know, in that case, then I choose not to do business at that, and that's a consequence of the business owner's choices there, which is fine. I don't have a problem with that. You know, I don't have a right to go there. It's, if, if I'm uncomfortable with the situation, I can choose to give my business elsewhere. Obviously, a lot of other people, you know, continue to, to do business with them.
I went for a pickup once and I was parked in while I walked in to get my to-go orders. So I, I know what you're saying. I agree. Julie, had a...
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, so I think it's fair to say that what we're talking about kinda falls into two different categories. One, there's a city code requirement of what parking is required by code, and then secondarily, what the business need is for parking. Certainly, the city strives to have a parking requirement that pretty closely matches what the business need is going to be. When you look at the community overall, I can only think of a couple of examples where the business need exceeds of what the parking requirement is. And in those situations, the minimum parking stalls required must be provided onsite. If they enter into private agreement to valet or lease spaces from an adjacent user that has an off-peak use, whether it's a, a church or a school or something like that, and they can lease and valet park over there, that, that's certainly something that is not in conflict with city code, because they have provided their minimum number of stalls on their site. And as I said, I can only think of a, a rare few examples where that has, has come into play. If that helps frame your conversation at all, I just wanted to offer that.
Thank you. Commissioner Higgins?
I was gonna bring up exactly that point, and I'm familiar with a couple of circumstances over at the place we've been discussing. And employees have been affected by that in the case, what we're, we're discussing with Four and Five. And arrangements have been made to get the employee parking someplace else. But it hasn't been without its problems as well. And I won't go into that, but, you know, I do think that there's some points that our staff is making that's, you know, it suggests the reality that I've seen happen as a result of some of the demands on that space.
Commissioner Farr, are you okay with leaving it? Do you wanna continue to discuss the usable square footage ratio or that metric, or are you comfortable with what the staff, or anybody, would be comfortable with the staff proposing that?
Thank you for your question. Yeah, I have been thinking about it a little bit. And on a per-square-foot basis, you know, I would be comfortable raising it up to one car per 100 square feet instead of one car per 60 square feet. That's 10 cars per thousand. You know, a heavy retail user is a six car, six cars per thousand. I think we're faced with a lot of variables here that we've talked about tonight. We're talking about a, a business in the TOD district, or one not in the TOD district. That has a world of influence on, on this topic. Food, no food. Seating versus standing space. So, you know, then you multiply all those six variables together, and, and each business owner's gonna want something different anyway. So I would rather see the requirement of the applicant to develop a parking plan based on location, based upon menu, based upon seating space. And we can certainly give a guideline, but I wouldn't wanna over-regulate or over-park the space purposefully and broadcast that standard throughout when there's so many variables at hand. So I would propose maybe a one car per 100 square foot threshold and have them develop a parking plan. And frankly, if it comes up above or below, the market will govern. We have to protect the neighbors and the neighborhood from parking spillage and, and that sort of, that sort of potential economic damage or hardship. But through the planning process, I think we can get that done.
I'm a little uncomfortable in going that far. I've, I've been convinced that tightening up, as I hinted at earlier, probably isn't, isn't the right answer. But going too far, I'd rather give a mid-road, a, a middle-of-the-road number out there and then allow the applicant to, if they want to, if they believe they can have, they can succeed from both their business perspective and the city's perspective with less parking, build a case to, to go with fewer parking places. In other words, I'd, I'd rather go middle-of-the-road with our guideline rather than one end or, I was proposing a lower end of the spectrum, you're proposing a higher end of the spectrum. Why not stay middle-of-the-road and still allow them to make a proposal if they, they can make a good case?
Do I split the deal at 60?
Yeah.
That's basically what I was saying, yes.
Yeah. We ended up back where staff recommended in the first place. Good job, Julie. I don't think the number is as important as the mention in the code that a parking plan process is required. Absent of that, I think we could be just getting a lot of raised eyebrows when people read our code without hearing us debate tonight. I'd be completely comfortable with that.
When I first posed this question, the genesis for it was my concern, and thank you, Commissioner Farr, for articulating it on the unit of measurement. My concern was the unit of measurement fall, being applied universally throughout every district, or subsets of the districts that we, that we are proposing this to be allowed. And the reason that I used the table analogy and 100 square feet is I was contemplating how much area will it require for specific tables and then standing equivalent. And so there might be a way to kill two birds with one stone, insomuch that we can apply a factor or a, a conversion factor for standing equivalent to seating equivalent spots. And then, you know, that number would be, well, let's say, we've got three standing equivalents to one seating location, just throwing out numbers. And then we can apply the, or change the unit of measurement from one for 100, and I was leaning closer to that, one for 90 or one for 100, relaxing the ordinance quite a bit. And then we, we can change the unit of measurement and apply depending upon what, if we're in TOD, MU, TOD E, and how many square feet of area they're wanting to dedicate to standing room and mingling and camaraderie and other places they're wanting to allocate towards seated locations where it's a group and the group wants to kinda stay separate from the mingling area. I mean, I'm just putting the two different areas out there. I think we've come to some consensus, and it might even spill over into the resident, the, not residential, the restaurant areas. Might even spill into the restaurant areas that have bar locations where the stools themselves are slightly removed to allow for seating or standing, and more compact standing locations, especially when you have, like, some of the restaurants around here, they'll have bands come in every once in a while. And now you're inundated with a lot of parking requirements for a very short period of time, and in a season that is predominantly summertime only, and a lot of standing-room-only participants. We might be able to, you know, if we don't hasten trying to push this forward now, we say, well, let's take a look and see what these conversion numbers look like, and how can we apply that into the different zoning areas. And the TOD will have less people traveling, you know, cars in it. They'll have more people coming through train, as opposed to the industrial, which will share with the daytime occupancy requirements. I think the universal nature was a, kind of a, my concern.
Other thoughts about the metric used or the number ratio?
I don't, again, I still don't have an opinion on the metric or the, how we're gonna measure this. Like, to some extent, I think we're talking about a particular type of location, i.e. something in a commercial district, when to me, the trend is largely an industrial anyway, because of plenty of available parking, because it's gonna be off of when people are in industrial facilities. Anyway, I think of the ones I usually go to, and they're all industrial parks. If nothing else, parking's a little easier to deal with, and they have far more flexibility in dealing with getting food, the food to the, to the brewery than, than having customers leave the brewery to go somewhere else to get food and... go somewhere else to get food and other drinks at other places. So, I kind of do wonder if we're talking a lot about something that the market simply isn't already not terribly interested in dealing with. Because if it's already two owners to find parking, regardless of what the number is, they're going to go to a place where it's far more easier to get parking, and a place where it's far easier to provide food to their customers than having them leave the establishment altogether.
And the rent's probably cheaper.
And the rent's probably cheaper.
So, any stake in any of the 1 in 100, 1 in 60, or a conversion factor across all districts?
To some extent, like Commissioner Kirk, where if there's no parking, I'm going to go somewhere else. So, somewhere, and I'm not interested in over-regulating. The market will respond to however we decide here, and I'm not interested in going one way too far or one way to the other. So, middle ground's fine with me.
And I should add also the idea that was added on about putting together a parking plan.
Yes.
Yeah, I think my opinion is, basically concurs, a middle-ground guidance with Commissioner Farr's comment about make a case. We're open to a discussion, make a case, if you want to go one way or the other.
I like that.
Right. I think the applicant is going to be very savvy about their business model. They know how many people they want to attract, especially on peak hours, and they're going to have a strategy as they're looking for real estate solutions. They're going to want to know who their neighbors are, where the overflow parking can happen.
And we're talking about enough variables that trying to come up with just that one number, depending on district, as Commissioner Woodke says, depending on all kinds of different things, coming up with that one number is virtually impossible. I think that's what we're finding here in this discussion. But if we come up with some sort of middle-of-the-road and then welcome them to make a case, I'd be open to that.
Julie, with that idea, do you see any concerns implementing that, or language around that, or?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the research that staff did with regard to the parking for the taprooms indicated, much like what your conversation has kind of gravitated towards this evening, is a range of anywhere from one per 40 square feet of area within the taproom to one per 75. So, 60, as staff has proposed, is a bit of that middle ground, and we, based on our calculations, it appeared to correspond to what we currently require for per-seat calculation. We can certainly propose something in code that talks about a parking plan needs to be provided along with a proposal for a brewery or a distillery in order to address, you know, as I said, as was mentioned in the staff report, even within, say, a commercial regional service district, whether a brewery is proposed within a large-scale retail center, like, say, pick one Prairie Village Mall or Preserve Village Mall, one of the more sizable retail centers versus a smaller retail strip center, there's going to be variable even there, depending on the size of the center, depending on the tenant mix that is there. So, certainly, there's an understanding that we'll be looking at all of these on a case-by-case basis. What staff is proposing is that these uses be permitted by right, and parking minimums be established. They would only cause review to come before the planning commission and/or city council if there was a need to vary from those minimum parking requirements. So, I want to make sure everybody understands, we're not talking about every parking plan for every brewery or every distillery coming through a process where the planning commission and city council would have an opportunity to review and reflect on that. That is something that would need to be handled administratively in order to address those individual site-specific needs.
So, you propose the middle, and then they always have waiver process through them?
Correct.
I would recommend we close the public hearing and adopt the amendments as proposed.
All right. Just before that, let me just go and ask if anyone would like to speak to this, our hearing done. Commissioner Weber?
Move to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of a closed public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I move to recommend approval of the brewery's distilleries' code amendment based on staff recommendations and information contained in the staff report dated March 23, 2018.
Second. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, the motion carries.
That is the end of the public hearings this evening, and we are moving on to a planner's report.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, just a couple of dates that I'd like to throw out to you. We will certainly, as staff, email you as well, but I wanted to verbalize it this evening so that you'd have an opportunity to get them on your calendar. On May 1st, there will be another joint work session between the city council and the planning commission on Aspire, that, as you heard last Tuesday, that is when we hope to have a draft version of the Aspire plan to bring forward to you for your initial review, orientation, comments, those types of things. The second item is also a May event. It is the annual boards and commissions banquet, which is scheduled for May 17th. So, of course, you'll be receiving invitations and the like, but I did want to get that out on your calendars so that you can plan accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Members' reports. Continuing business. I feel like we should have said, noticed Tavern Four and Five tonight, but...
Could I take a second for a member's comment?
Yep.
I think this is the last meeting for Commissioner Woodke, and I'd like to thank him for his, what, nine years of volunteering his time, effort, and energy to the city, and I believe his input has helped us all and made the city a little better place. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, commissioners. I was going to say thank you to all of you, as well as the past members that were on this commission for putting up with me over the last decade or so. The staff has really been top-notch. We have a top-notch staff here in Perry. I don't, other communities probably wish that they would be able to have the staff that we have, so we're blessed. And the city council, I'd like to thank them publicly as well for putting me on for three full terms, I guess. And then, the residents, our residential and our business communities are, they're highly intelligent and they're very approachable. In fact, they come up to me when I'm out in public, and we just start talking about things, and because they recognize my wild shirts probably from the meetings. But I'm going to miss you guys, but not going anywhere. You might see me with a different hat on in the future, so.
Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, if there's no other new business, Commissioner Woodke, would you like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'd like to move to adjourn the planning commission meeting for March 26, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We're adjourned.